I call this meeting, the order, roll call.
David Chandler.
Here.
Joey Grissom.
Here.
Cherry, Cherry Hickey.
Here.
William Maxwell.
Here.
All right, get along. We call this meeting, the order, roll call.
David Chandler.
Go ahead, here.
Joey Grissom.
Here.
Cherry, Cherry Hickey.
Oh, here. We have a difficult.
There we go.
William Maxwell.
Here.
Bill Mosley.
Here.
Mickey Robinson.
Here.
Henry Sammons.
Here.
Brian Simmons. Robert Van Winkle. Michael Woodley.
Mr. Berry, would you like to say one prayer?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, come before you tonight, Lord, for this opportunity to do work for this county and, and for all in the best interest. Lord, we pray to you to bless this county and bless this state and bless this country. Lord, we ask you to be with our soldiers and servicemen that are, and women that are abroad. We ask you to be with them and protect them, Lord, bring them home safely. Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting tonight. We ask you to forgive us of our sins, Lord, and those that sin against us. We pray this all in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Item number three, approval dismissed from Office 10th meeting.
There needs to be a correction, sorry.
You withdraw your motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Will.
Uh, it should say, in the meeting, in the minutes, it says that it should be, it is a, uh, sorry, trying to get back to it. It said it was a special call meeting, it should have not been a special call meeting, it should have been a regular meeting that was rescheduled. Is the only clarification I had there. Says in the first, or the first line there, that the Van Buren County Commission at an special called meeting, and it was not a special called meeting, it was a, it was advertised as a regular meeting, but rescheduled to the day, and that was the only error.
And I still need approval for the Office 10th meeting.
Yes.
Motion by Mickey, for her second.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Simmons. On the favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Not motion carries. Item number four, Committee A meeting report. Will.
Yep, I'm here. Just getting unmuted, give me just one second, okay. Uh, first item, my message was the budget amendments that were presented by Jessica Grissom, Finance Director, uh, that were attached in the, uh, Commission minutes. Below, does anybody have any questions on those that I can answer? Or attempt. Ask if anybody had any questions.
Is any question over budget amendments?
I do have one little question about that. Are we supposed to be live on YouTube?
Yes, it should be.
It should be.
Yeah, ain't nothing but Paul Creek Paul stuff mine, and people are coming and going, it says. I just thought I'd ask.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Joey.
Joey Simmons. Yes.
Uh, I think since we're doing this by Zoom, and, uh, not everybody's there's live, that all, uh, everything has to be roll call vote.
Correct.
That is correct.
We need to back up to the Office 10th meeting then. Our motion, the weak in the second, Mr. Simmons. Go ahead and do that roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Committee A, Will. Ask if anybody had any questions, anybody have any questions over the minutes and stuff?
Like I said, the, uh, budget amendments were to clear up some items, uh, that we had. Sorry, did we have some question?
No, I believe that was some feedback right there.
Okay, sorry. Okay, guys, just stick.
Is all this uniform? Amendment, they don't have?
Yes, sir. Some, some of it was some things in the budget that was overlooked, uh, when, when the budget was, um, developed. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by the committee. This is Will.
The motion by Will, I hear a second.
David's second.
Second by David. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle. Michael Woodley.
Anyone wish to change your vote? If not, motion carries. Anything else, Will?
Yes, I got several more items. We spoke about a waste, uh, solid waste contract, uh, to provide solid waste pickup to the county residents. Um, this will be a, um, exploratory project, we're just exploring our options here, uh, possible that allow the mayor to put together a bids pro, or a bid spec for the project, to look into this for potential bids. And just took action to allow the mayor to, um, determine if this would be feasible for the county and look at a, look at bids. And I'd like to make that in form of a motion to allow that.
I got a motion by Will, I hear a second. Who made the second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Simmons.
Uh, I would like to make sure in that bid proposal, uh, that the mayor's putting together, that in that bid proposal, that the citizens, uh, that the citizens of the county would not be required to sign up for that, that in the, they would be able to haul their trash and pay a tipping fee.
It, it, my understanding, it's what Committee A passed, it's just exploratory, there's no bid packet. At the bid packet, if there is a bid packet, it would have to come back before the commission and be worked out. So as of right now, it's just kind of explore the options and see where we stand. Yeah, it's not, it's not a bid packet, the bid packet would have to be reviewed, guys, if I, if I was, I said that wrong possibly, but, uh, it, it's just allow the mayor to put together a set of bid specs and to explore our options, so. We would definitely approve anything further.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Not roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Based on Mayor Wilson's explanation, I vote yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
If anyone wants to change their vote? Not motion carries. Will.
Next item was the auditor suggested that we draft a resolution for approval of the commission, a, uh, for forgiveness of the solid waste money that was used to purchase the BDS site. We had taken action on that in the January 2019 meeting to forgive this debt, but we have been instructed that a retroactive resolution is needed to make this final. Um, I believe the, uh, our legal counsel has drawn up that resolution, and it was, uh, sent out to you guys, um, today, or you have a copy of it now. Does anybody have any discussion or questions on that?
Um, here notice.
Do what?
We also sent it to the comptroller's office today, Will.
Okay.
Any action?
I'd like to, uh, take a motion to approve this retroactive resolution as presented.
A motion by Will, I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Simmons. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Same.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Based on the fact I haven't had a chance to read the resolution, because I haven't been home the day I was playing with my brother, that's my.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Since yes, two same.
This is a simple majority or ten thirds, so, simple majority. Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Always vote now.
Robert's on now.
Robert's on now.
Uh, Will, do you want to explain it to him?
Robert, it was a retroactive resolution, um, for the purchase, give the money we used to purchase the BDS site. We had taken action on the Ju- January 2019 meeting. Um, this was a audit, to clear up an audit situation.
Yeah, I read it today.
Okay. Joey, you want me to move on to the next item?
You wish to vote, Mr. Van Winkle?
Uh, I'll vote yes.
Motion carries. Will, anything else?
Okay, next, uh, next item was the Carers Act, Van Buren County will receive, uh, eighty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five grant money for the Carers Act, to help cover costs of COVID-19. This money is not in the budget and needs to be included in revenue as well as expenditures, and those codes are listed, revenue four six nine zero zero, increased by eighty-six thousand, four seventy-five, and expenditure code by the same, uh, code number, code, sorry, forty-one, one hundred, line three oh nine. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Hey, Will, the, uh, the code there, it should be on our, uh, it should be fifty-one, one hundred, should it not?
For the expenditure?
Yeah.
Okay, that could be a typo, that, that's very possible, I don't have the budget right here in front of me. I may enter that wrong.
Yeah, the expenditure should be fifty-one, one hundred dash three oh nine.
Okay, very good, that was a typo.
Motion by Will on the second, by Mickey, no problems.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? If not, motion carries. Will?
Next item was a COVID-19 policy and resolution, this is, uh, the mayor maybe can expand on this more, it is listed below, everybody should have got it in the packet in the, uh, in the, um, Committee A packet, uh, just deals with, um, several things about, um, leave, uh, employee leave with COVID, um, Mayor, can you expand on that anymore? Do you have more details?
Yeah, that, this, this is required if we have an employee that goes out on quarantine, or they have COVID, that they do not have to take their leave, uh, that we, uh, will pay them for that time. We have to do this in order to get reimbursed for that, for this, for that money. Um, Howard, y'all probably have done that bloodsaw, but it's, this is something that, uh, is required, uh, before we can do that, until that time, and that person would have to take leave with that, this policy. And we would not get reimbursed for that.
Any action?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve this, uh, policy and resolution as presented.
Motion by Will over here, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mickey. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yeah.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Anyone wish to change your vote? If not, motion carries. Will.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we had that required action by the commission, thank you.
All right, item number five, Committee B meeting report.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Committee B met on September the first, two thousand twenty. Uh, we discussed the bids for the cu- uh, commercial real estate agent fees, uh, to sell the BDS property and the Masonic property. Uh, during that time, the mayor presented to the committee members that he and the members of the Solid Waste Committee would like to put out the Van Buren County Solid Waste for bid, work up a packet, uh, we would no longer operate the Solid Waste Department if we do this. Uh, this would have to be done in two bids. One bid would be to offer the Van Buren County citizens the curbside trash pickup. Uh, the second bid would be on the BDS property and equipment. Uh, after much discussion on this, uh, Committee B, uh, decided to send this, uh, back to the Solid Waste Commission, which, uh, we've already voted on that tonight. Uh, the second item that we discussed was the, the BDS property and the Masonic property were done on the same vote at our last commission meeting. So basically what we did was we gave the mayor, uh, permission to, uh, solicit the bids from the commercial real estate agent on the Masonic property alone, uh, uh, we did a roll call vote, uh, everybody voted yes. Um, I, at that time, I did bring it up, uh, to the attention of the committee that, uh, I would like to see that, once it's drawn up, uh, that the, uh, citizens would have, uh, a say in whether they wanted to get on board with that. Uh, they could haul their own and pay a tipping fee. Um, the third item, uh, that I brought up was, we have actually had an offer on the Masonic building. The local American Legion post, I got an email from Mr. Hansel Moore. They want to offer ten thousand dollars for that building. Um, Committee B discussed that. Uh, and what we thought would be best was to, once we get that real estate, uh, bid in, that they could go through the real estate agent and make an offer. Uh, we were updated on the, uh, COVID situation at the, uh, Masonic building, or at the, uh, visitors. The visitors came into the, uh, administrative building, employees with, some was diagnosed with COVID, and then at the building was going to have to have a deep clean. And, uh, that was basically all we had. Uh, we asked for, uh, questions from citizens, and there wasn't any. So a motion was made by Terry to adjourn, second by Bill Mosley. Roll call vote, everybody voted yes. I don't think I have anything that I need, uh, to bring before the commission tonight.
I, I do have one thing. Brian, on that Committee B, where we put it out for bid for, uh, commercial real estate representation in the paper.
Yes.
Uh, they were due in today by two o'clock. Uh, we did not receive any on time, we did receive one, but it didn't come in until about, I think it was about a quarter to four. So they were, they're forty-five minutes late. Uh, as it advertised in the paper, I don't think we can accept that bid, bid that they were due in, in it too. Is that correct?
You cannot.
Okay. Uh,
Uh, would we need to run that again, or, or would we need to go from here, uh, Howard?
If, if you're, if you're soliciting, or if you're wanting the lowest speaker, if you're wanting the lowest bid, then it needs to be ran again in the paper. What you want, that's what you need to do.
Okay, well.
However, you advertised it the last time.
It was, uh, ran for right at two weeks, I think it was, uh, the last one come out last Thursday. Uh, and, and again, we, we didn't get it, we did get the one, but it, they, they come in, it was an hour and four, five minutes late. So we can, like Howard said, we can bid it out for commercial real estate person again, or, uh, whatever y'all choose to do, you know?
Oh, promotion. Do we need to do that now, or under new bids? Brian?
Howard, they, he had a question. Oh, well, one of them.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yeah.
I'd like to make most in Committee B give Mayor Wilson authority to repost it with a commercial real estate broker. And I would like to add that this time we put a reserve on it. Or do I need to wait to put a reserve on it after we get the bid? Be too late.
I, I, I think on, Brian, wasn't that ninety-nine thousand on the Masonic building?
That was what we were going to list for, Greg, yes.
Right, and so what we're looking at now is that we need to either rebid out the for representation of a real estate firm, uh, commercial real estate firm, or you just take bids on it, I guess, I, I mean, whichever y'all decide to do. I mean, you could put it in the paper and take bids on it, I guess.
You could sell it without a real estate agent involved, but if you do that, you have to go through the bid process.
Right, then you would put a reserve, that's what I was getting, then you'd put that reserve on there at that point.
We need a reserve on it.
If you do, if you do that way, if you don't go the real estate.
Need to try that real estate.
Yeah. Well, need to.
Do that now?
Give a second.
Not any mass. Do all the commissioners want to just, uh, put this back in the paper and see if we can get us a real estate agent to bid on it again?
That would be commercial.
That would be, yes. If that doesn't work, then we drop to do it ourselves.
That's correct. Any action to do this?
I will put that in the form of a motion, Joey.
Did you understand what I said?
Yeah, yeah, but he had a motion.
Brian, oh, you didn't have?
He had one, to make a motion to repost it with a commercial real estate. To bid on it again.
We already had that motion on the table.
Yes.
I'll second, uh, Bill's motion.
And Bill, was that your motion to make a motion to repost it with a commercial real estate agent? To bid on this again? What was?
Put it in commercial real estate tan for a rebid.
For a rebid.
All right, roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Joey, that's all I had.
Okay, any old business?
Yes. Um, old business, uh, I think it was back in June, a couple meetings ago, that, uh, was requested that our attorney, Howard Upchurch, do a to change, and I think it was Will that asked that, change the ten day agenda rule to five day agenda ruled, where it will eliminate a lot of new business and things of that nature, that we, that way we can still have it to you in five days, instead of ten, in that resolution, we should have that. Uh, sent that out today, when Howard sent it out the other resolution, so. Yes. Anyway, as requested, that's, that's the resolution.
Did all the commissioners understand that?
Yeah.
Any action?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept this resol- resolution to change from a ten day rule to a five day rule for submission of, of the paperwork.
I got a motion by Will on the second, by Mickey. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
No.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
No.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Anyone wish to change your vote? If not, motion carries. Any other old business? Any new business?
Uh, yeah, Carla, uh, Cochran, I think Lisa sent that out sometime ago, it's for her, uh, notary.
Has everybody gotten this, right?
Yes, yeah, it was sent out, uh, what, two weeks ago? No, I'm not.
Got a motion, Mickey, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Simmons.
Take your pick.
Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
It was, uh, Carla Cochran's, uh, notary.
Anyone wish to change your vote? If not, motion carries. Any other new business?
I don't have any. I got one thing.
I do.
Hold on a second, go ahead, Bill.
This might come under old business, might come under new business. I would like to have, uh, Mayor Wilson explain to the people that's listening tonight about the confusion of if the will tax vote passes, the confusion of it not being on the ballot, that if it's to be raised. If it to be raised or lowered in the future, it would be put back on the ballot for people to vote on. And I'd like for Mayor Wilson to explain that to the people that's listening, because it's confusing and I've had some calls on it and I was confused a little bit myself, Mayor.
And Bill and I talked about this today and he asked me this question and I turned around and called Howard to double check to make sure what I told him was right and. And anytime, it's like the local purpose tax fund that goes out to the fire departments. It was voted in in the late eighties, eighty eight, eighty nine, somewhere along in there, and it was ten cents property tax and it passed by the people. The only way, and if y'all remember, a few years ago, we talked about upping that just a little bit, well, you can't up it unless the people vote on it. And and anytime anything of this tax increase, that anytime a tax increase for or any kind of tax, correct, Howard? That is our will taxes voted on by the people, the only way that it can be changed. Uh, up, done away with, whatever, is through the vote of the people, is that correct?
That's correct, and and I I know what Mister Mosley is talking about because the ballot question. Is somewhat limited and condensed. You don't print the whole resolution and the enabling statute on the ballot question, you just simply can't do that for a ballot purpose. I prepared the ballot as I'm required to do as county attorney and uh and and when I sent it, uh, I. Asked and and suggested that if anybody wanted changes to that ballot, if it wasn't approved, to let me know. Uh, and I I didn't hear anything about it, but the ballot does not change. The statute and the general law which will require. Action by the voters to amend that tax rate that we established. Regardless of what the ballot says or does not, so.
So in in the future, you know, five years down the road, ten years down the road, or two years down the road, as far as that goes. Commission decides they want to do that, it's gotta go straight to the ballot.
I understood that after I talked to Mayor Wilson today. The reason I brought it up tonight was people listening in, I wanted them to hear that why it was done that way.
Sure.
I hope it answered the question.
I do too.
Thank you.
Will, do you have something?
Yes, I did, uh, guys, I spoke at the last meeting uh about a uh that did not receive a budget. Committee A did not receive a budget from the election commission, I spoke in air. Uh, I'd like to apologize, I did have that budget, it was in an email that was sent back in June amongst other items and I did not see that, I wasn't aware. We had received that item, however we did, and I just wanted to clear that up and um let everyone know that I was wrong. I'll take full responsibility for that, thank you.
Anybody else having new business? Cheryl?
Um, I spoke to. Office today, William Maxwell was in on the Zoom call. As was Mary Ann Dersky from the finance department with the Department of Education. Spoke at length with Brian Runyon, which is our financial consultant, thanks, and uh. We presented a budget here, it's been about two months ago. And numbers are not matching up, which they're not, because we've had to make budget amendments to it and things like that and adjusted. And so uh in order to meet our three percent fund balance, which right now what is in the orange folder that you guys have that's here, then. It has been met with that, also has the memorandum of memorandum of effort. Maintenance of effort, yes, I knew I was wrong on that one. Maintenance of effort has been met also, and it has all the budget amendments, and then this, once it's submitted to the comptroller's office, will match up with. What's in a plan that we have to put in. Okay. Those of you that have a folder that's here. The first one is the one forty one budget. And it does have the three amendments that uh we had talked about. Um, on the very first page. On forty two twenty, the hotel motel tax. Has to stay at one hundred seven thousand dollars for our maintenance of effort. And so that's back at one hundred seven thousand. Uh, the second page at forty four nine ninety, other local revenues, we had to add a hundred sixty four thousand right there, which hopefully is. The. Loss of revenue from the hotel motel tax at the end, that we put it there, so it would be non recurrent, and then on the third page. Seventy one one hundred one sixteen on the teacher line item. Our financial consultant said that need to be lowered by eighty thousand, so it's at two million four hundred twenty thousand.
The school board approved these budget amendments?
Not yet, they will tomorrow night, or they should tomorrow night, that's when it's going to be put in front of them because they make once a month.
I guess, can we approve budget amendments before the school board approves it? I think approves it? I don't, oh.
They have in the past. Because you gotta remember uh budgets are due by October first, and in order for us to get our BEP, which is a a big chunk of our money. They have to be approved and met, you know, and things, so.
Can we do that, Howard?
Then we meet tomorrow night.
The Department of Education is not approved yet.
Not yet, our financial consultant is the one that has done that, yeah.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to have approval by the Department of Education.
So what we may need to do is wait for the board's approval, and I mean, we may have to have a.
Have to have special.
On this. Yeah.
Can we not do it under the provision that the that the school board passes it?
I guess that'd be a question for Howard. Guys, I uh got a little bit of insight, we're gonna have to ha- also amend, once that is passed, we're gonna have to amend. Our budget resolution to those new uh amounts, according to what the comptroller told me today.
It's got to happen. Got to happen, it's good.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta do it before October the first, so yeah. That's what we'll have to do. I mean, it is what it is.
So we will need to advertise for a special call meeting ASAP.
Yes.
Um.
Drop the Saturday right now since the school board's making it more night.
We'll just need to have to advertise, which we can advertise around town, and we put it in the paper, let's see, tomorrow's Wednesday, if you decide upon a date now, we get to go out the paper on Thursday. You could do it as early as next week. I think, uh, was it a five days on a special call? For advertising. It's gonna come out Thursday.
I mean.
Thursday, right, sir.
What was that date, eight?
It's gonna be the twenty second.
Is everybody okay with that? September twenty second for a special call meeting?
And I do apologize, this taking so long, but when all this COVID hit, we can't, people can't come to us and pull our stuff and, you know, then they contact us and say, well, we've got to change this and we've got to change that, so it's like.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, committee A, we got a meeting on uh Thursday. Yeah, we can handle it Thursday, we got a meeting Thursday.
Thursday morning.
Yeah.
What time?
September twenty second.
What time?
Six.
Is that enough, is that enough time? Twenty seven, I mean.
We can advertise the meeting for the twenty second, which would be one week from today, and that advertisement will come out.
Start out posting tomorrow and.
And put it in the paper on Thursday.
Correct.
And uh. And we'll go ahead, yeah, we'll go ahead and post it downstairs and other places, City Hall. Um, and the bank, I think it's places of high. Traffic.
Would you be able to have the, sorry? Would you be able to have the document ready?
That's poison for, is that poison for Cheryl?
Well, no, I'm saying that if we're gonna get, if we have to give those five business days before the meet, that's in the morning, they're not gonna meet till tomorrow night. You're gonna have to have the documents out to the commissioners. Five days before the meeting. Is that correct, is it business days or days in general?
So we'll have to turn around.
Yeah, that would be necessary. So you would not have five days. We could uh, we could do it on Thursday forward, if that's all right with everybody. I mean, that would give us plenty of time.
And it's just to amend, I gotta put this in a paper and it can only be one thing.
Yeah.
He's got a city meeting.
Guys, according to the comptroller's office, we're gonna have to amend our budget resolution as well that we passed at the last meeting to reflect this, so you better put two items on there. Unless we want to have another call meeting.
Next Wednesday, six o'clock, okay? That way we don't interfere with city meeting. On Thursday.
Twenty third.
Twenty third. So, okay, sure.
Wednesday, twenty third, six o'clock, be okay with all commissioners? Six o'clock.
Wednesday, six o'clock, twenty third, right?
Yep, correct. I'd be okay with that, buddy?
What about our? We don't have to do anything in A to commit uh for the committee to uh. About the. Changes in the budget?
You guys are meeting Thursday, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the next day.
If they do it on Wednesday and they and uh media approves it, then.
It's Thursday.
Media meets Thursday.
Yeah, you may not gonna be with you anyway.
Yeah, it was gonna be about the school.
Yeah, so. We should be able to get the documents out to everybody, uh emailed out to everybody and delivered by Thursday afternoon, so. That. That would get us there exactly. So. The only thing is we need to uh decide exactly. I know the amendment of the education budget, and I'm talking about for the advertisement. So it'd be to amend. Uh, the Van Buren County. Education, school edge, uh, school fund, and would it be cafeteria as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The general purpose.
General purpose and cafeteria, general cafeteria, right?
Yes.
So that would be one thing, and then Will, it would be also to amend Van Buren County total budget. We'd have to do that to send to the, or the comptroller's office, so.
To, yeah, to the effect of what we do with the with the school budget is. So it it kinda hinges off of the first item, we have to amend our budget resolution to the effect of the first item.
So it'd be to amend the twenty twenty one. Budget res- resolution, and is that okay to put in the paper like that, okay? Okay, that's how we'll put it in the paper.
So Wednesday, September twenty third, at six o'clock. Okay with that, right? Any other new business?
Make sure we got that, we don't have them. Our special call meeting is gonna be when?
The twenty third at six o'clock. Correct?
Yes.
Did you get that, David?
Yeah.
I'll send it out. Yeah, I'll send it out uh tomorrow afternoon.
I was just thinking, A had to meet before y'all had that meeting, that's I was thinking.
Well, they'll be meeting Thursday morning, so.
David, it's this Thursday, the seventeenth day's meeting, I think you're confused on weeks.
Oh, okay, alright, I understand.
Any other new business?
I've got one thing that I just want to, not necessarily new business, but just something that I think needs to be considered. By the commission eventually, uh, sometime soon, or not necessarily soon, but uh take a look at it. Um. That's the, we talked about this, Henry, I think on committee A back in. Uh, September two thousand and fourteen, which was about six years ago. And I think that we need to take a strong look at going to the nineteen eighty one law for Van Buren County. Which provides, and and I know it's, it would be a cost with it, and but it would be a provide for a finance director uh Van Buren County. Uh, it is changing to the nineteen eighty one law, we're under the general law right now. But I think that's a need that Van Buren County and the future commissions and future. Mayors and director of schools and road department uh. Utilize, uh, I I but I think, and I'm not saying that we, hey, let's go and do it and do it next month or two months down the road or whatever, but I think it's just something. That. We need heavily. Um, I was able to sit in a few years ago, two or three years ago with White County and and uh and some of their meetings that they had, some of their committee meetings. Not necessarily the commission meeting, but in their uh committee meetings. And having that position, uh, you can just see a world of difference, and. We're one of very few counties in the state Tennessee is not under the nineteen eighty one law, there's there are several smaller ones, but I think we would vastly benefit from it. In the future. Uh, you know, and it it may be something that. We not even do this year, might not even do next year, but I think it's something that Van Buren County is in very much of a need. Um. But anyway, that that's, I, there's just kinda planting a seed there, so to speak, and not necessarily, we have a discussion unless y'all want to have a discussion on it. But that, and it, I just feel that's direction, a good direction to really take a look at.
I got one other item I'd like to discuss. Could you explain to us about the training in the state law?
Yes.
Van Buren County.
Yes, I talked, yes, I talked to uh Ben, referring to the comptrollers later, I've already uh. While I was in quarantine last couple of weeks, I did talk to Ben Rogers last week. And he is going to set up a four hour, and he's gonna check on the comptrollers and see exactly. Uh, the titles and the course content that he want, they want him to cover. Uh, he's got a pretty good idea of what he's he's gonna need to do, and he's probably looking at minimum a four hour deal. Uh, and hopefully it'll be something, uh, Jay, that we can do via Zoom. Um, and it may be a section where he does part of it today of two hours, and then we do another day of two hours, I mean, four hours is a big chunk for a lot of people. People work. And uh maybe something we do of a night, a two hour uh portion tonight, and then maybe two weeks later, we do another two hour. Uh, could be something we could add to one of our commission meetings in the future, like next month, if we can get it together and we just, everybody decides after the meeting, we just do a two hour training session and come and do it live at that point. Uh, or via Zoom, you know, that depends upon, I guess, next month whether the governor extends his executive order for electronic meetings. Um, so, well, but we, I've already talked to him about that, and he's gonna be setting that up and and working on that pretty soon.
Thank you, Mayor.
So hopefully, hopefully, we'll have some information on it uh by this, uh, by next meeting uh that we can, I can get out to you and say, hey. Plan on being here for two hours after with me. Your phone. You're welcome.
Any other new business from the commission? If not, I think we have a couple of people that want to speak, uh, ask you to limit your time to two minutes.
Uh, there was, there was three, one canceled out, uh, the first one, I think, was Laura Wallace, and then the other one was.
There's no one, there's no one in the meeting right now waiting to come in. You haven't dialed in.
Okay.
I'm waiting to come in.
Oh, okay.
I'm waiting to come in.
Other one was Virginia Evans, had, was the other one, I had one more, but uh Jay, she she emailed and said she. I had one more, but Jay, she, she emailed and said she was calling out, so.
Yeah. And Laura, Laura Wallace is waiting to go too, so I will just mute myself and let her go first.
Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, I, I talked back and forth to the mayor a lot about the waste because of the meeting, the committee A meeting, when I heard of it. And I was just wondering why we were looking at something different with the waste. I'm assured that there's nothing wrong with our money income or what, what's the problem? Why are we, why are we working, looking at a different way of doing the waste?
I, I, I can answer that, and that was something that was brought to our attention, that the possibility of, and of course, we told them that, you know, that to look at it sounded good, but we'd have to bid it out, you know? And again, it's, it's it's one of those things, it's gonna take a lot of, lot of thought. Sounds good. And if it's able to be done, I, I, I guess it would be good for the county. I don't know. We'd just have to wait and see exactly what all that would look at and look like here in, here in the next little bit. And it's not one of these processes that I think we're gonna be able to do, you know, next week. I mean, you're looking at a, probably a six month to possibly even longer to even decide whether or not to do it. And, you know, you, in, in going into something like that, you'd have to make sure, one is that whoever bids on it is a viable company, can, has the same power to be able to do it. So the best thing, as we talked earlier, Lauren, I appreciate your emails on that as well. It's good questions. And, and it's, it's good questions that, right now, as, as we talked earlier, you know, it'd be an email, that it's just one of those things, and as you heard tonight, it's just an exploratory type thing. I don't think you'll see anything on that, but we'll be, that'll be updated through committee A, committee B, because it has to deal with, it has to deal with, sorry about that. But anyway, it has to deal with, trying to get my timer here. But anyway, I hope that answered your question. I think what, I thought, I hoped I'd answered your question enough earlier.
Yeah, you answered a lot of them. That was just the, the last one of it. So that's all I want to know about.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia, you still on?
Yeah, yeah. I have a follow-up question because I didn't really hear a response to Laura's question, which was, are we financially right now making money from solid waste? We're all good, is that correct?
It, it's, it's doing well, yes.
Doing well as in, as in what? What does that mean?
We are.
Like figure-wise? Yeah.
Yeah, I, figure-wise, last I looked at the trial balance today, there was, I think, 40 some odd thousand in that.
Right. And so we're, so we're doing well, but we want to give it away to somebody else?
I, I don't think we said anything about giving it away or anything. If it's a better.
But we're, yeah, we're exploring it though. So, so we think we can make more money if we give it to somebody else? Is that what it is?
I don't think that's what we're looking at. We're looking at a possibility of a better service for the county residents, you know? That's the biggest thing. I, you know, the county's not into solid waste to make money, you know? I mean, we.
But, but we'll charge more. We're gonna charge more to give a better service unless, as Mr. Simmons requested, we, we're able to opt out. So we're looking at giving a higher service at a higher cost and hopefully an opt-out for those who don't want to pay a higher cost, correct?
Again, it's exploratory, but yes, Brian Simmons did bring that up, and it's a good point.
Okay, yeah.
And all that would have to take in consideration. And again, we, we have no bid documents. We have no agreements or anything of that nature.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just, you know, it's just, you know, when we started all of this, we bought a facility for $575,000, and then we wrote it off or forgave it and lost all the money. And then last year, the income for solid waste was horrible. And now we're talking about raising the fees. So, you know, there's, there's some concern and some transparency would really be appreciated. But all that aside, the reason that I wanted to speak tonight is that I have, I've spoken with Mr. Maxwell, and I've spoken with you, Greg, a few times now. And I brought up in meetings some of the CTO 253s or the debt obligation reports. And we're talking about transparency, and you guys have talked about that today and about being open about things. And it seems like from 2016 to 2020, we just failed to follow our debt management policy. Can you guys hear me? I'm getting a lot of feedback and I'm using headphones.
We can hear. Or you can hear.
Okay, okay, good. All right. So we didn't follow our debt management policy. We didn't fill out the CTO 253s, the reports. And part of what we do with those reports is we share information on why we're making decisions with our finances. And the objectives that you have listed here for it is to enhance decision process transparency and identify all expenditures of principal, interest, and annual costs, along with issue specific transaction costs, address any potential conflict of interest, and additional requirements of new debt. And all these items, and one of the things we talk about is new debt and for refinancing. And for refinancing. Paying financing and analysis shall be provided, which explains the reasons for the refinancing and the net savings. I, I am getting terrible feedback. Are you sure you can understand me? I took off my headset and it sounds even worse.
We can hear you perfect.
Okay, could you repeat back what I just said then? Anybody? Can anybody repeat what I said that you can hear so perfectly?
When you asked if we had any, if we were getting the feedback, that was your last comment, I believe. Perfectly.
All right, there's a lot of static. Okay, so in the case of refinancing, an analysis shall be provided, which fully explains the reasons for the refinancing and the net savings and cost of the refinancing, which will include interest charges. And the reason that's important is when we did the refinance on the building, we've talked about what a great rate we got, and we've talked about, you know, that we've, we've gotten lower, lower payments, but we haven't talked about what it actually cost us in interest charges. And Greg told me yesterday that, you know, nobody's asked about this, but why would people ask about something they don't know anything about? And what an opportunity it would be, since you guys are going to learn about, you know, government finance through CTOs, through the technical training they've required you to have, what an opportunity it would be if we also educated the citizens on these policies as well and brought them up to date. So when we're meeting the requirements for the auditors, when they ask us for things that we've already done, what about if we also did this and went over the old debt obligation reports and shared those with the citizens so that they can be up to date and they can learn and they can be part of that experience as well?
Well, as, as we, of course, you come in yesterday and we were in the middle of something and, but here's the thing, and as I explained to you earlier, when the commission, first off, of course, committee A, when we'd done the refi, and it was gonna be a refi, it was kind of a plan all along to do a refi of the construction loans that we'd done to build the building. And give a quick example for everybody out there, if you buy, if you go out and buy a car, and you can, and like I told you yesterday, you can finance it for 36 months, or you can choose to finance it for 72 months. If you finance it for 36, you're not gonna pay as much interest if you pay or finance it for 72 months. You are gonna pay interest, or more interest, I'm sorry. But we refi'd the building, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong. We refi'd the building for a better, more manageable payment, which we got. And at the time, we were at 3.85, I think is what it was, 3.85 or 8.7, I can't recall. Henry, do you remember? Or Will? I, I can't remember right off the bat at the time on a construction loans. We ended up getting a rate of 2.46 interest rate for our refi. And of course, it went through the commission, everything was bid out, you know? And you, I got your stuff in mail today, and so your questions that you have there, I got it in the mail this afternoon. As I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to get with, there's some static there. It sounds like some paper wadding or something. But your questions that you have, I will write you back sometime later on this week. But that's pretty much all I got to say, since you asked the same question yesterday and then in mail today, I will turn, and again tonight, I will write you back and then.
I just wanted to make sure that I gave every opportunity to meet that requirement. You know, I'd had to make sure I checked all the boxes. So I hear you saying again that you will not present publicly the debt obligation.
Now, wait a minute. Now, wait a minute. You're putting things there, Virginia?
Okay, are you gonna be presenting them then? Are you gonna be presenting them? Because that would be great to know.
Again, like I said, I, I will write everything to you that you requested in the paper or in what I've received in the mail today. And that's pretty much all I got to say about that.
All right.
I mean, you, you asked the same questions, and I've given you the same answers, and I, I don't know what else to do on that.
Same questions.
I do have an approval letter, of course, that the comptroller approved, approved back in August 2019. I told you that the other day, I think it was.
Yeah, that's, that's not that management policy, Greg. That's a CTO 253. Those are separate things.
Well, I've got all those, and of course, the policy was approved by the commission back in 2011. We have a.
Yes, that's, we have a different policy that was approved in 2011, and it is not being observed, and it is not, it is being violated.
That I think that it is, that anybody wants to call or come and look and go to what they're talking about, go look at the minutes of the meetings for anybody of the citizens. Correct me if I'm wrong, Howard.
Wrong.
Wait a minute, our attorney's right here, and that's what that is. And you've done, can I, can I finish speaking? Your answer? Can I finish speaking? Okay.
Thank you, the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Will.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn from Will, right, a second from Mickey. Calling for ever say aye.